Colony meeting to order at 6:01 PM for the June 14th Auburn Board of Selectmen meeting. This open meeting of the town of Auburn Board of Selectmen is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12, 2020, which suspends the requirements of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of the public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely as long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of a meeting, ensuring that public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will allow for the public comment under agenda. Ooh, not that one. Do we have public comments? I don't think we do. Yeah, under item two. And there's a call and number for those who want to speak during the public hearing. For the public to join the meeting remotely or by telephone, call 1-408-650-3123 and enter access code 235235861, or the public can join via computer at global.gotomeeting.com/join/235235861. All supporting materials have been provided to the members of this body and are available on the town website. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda. As a preliminary matter, this is Tristan Liberty, Chairman of the Board of Selectmen. Allow me to confirm that all members are and persons participating in the agenda are present and can hear. So Vice Chair Ren.
Here.
Mr. is here. Lionel Bertheum. Lionel Bertheum is not here. Sarah Ruffley.
Here.
Sarah is here. Dan Carpenter.
I'm here.
Dan is here. Also, Town Manager Julie Jacobson.
Here.
Town CFO slash Assistant Town Manager Ed Kasanovic.
Here.
Administrative Assistant Sharon Kwiatkowski.
Here.
Also note that the meeting is being recorded by Auburn Cable Television and that all votes in this meeting will be taken by a roll call vote. With that, we'll go to public hearings and presentations. There are none. Communications are none. More Selectmen general items, we have a transient vendor license application for Fork and Delicious. Enclosed in your packets are the application. Is there a representative available?
Through the chair, if I may speak on this item, I don't believe we have a representative. My understanding is that the applicant has yet to provide the police department with the required application and documentation that is needed to perform the required fingerprint query under the town's bylaws. So my recommendation at this point would be to just remove this item from future agendas. If the applicant comes back and does get the fingerprint query and is cleared to go, we'll bring it back to the board for a recommendation. But until such time, it doesn't make sense to keep it on the agenda.
Okay, yeah, this has been, I think, the third time or so that's been on. With that, I'll entertain a motion by any board member.
I'll make a motion to remove the transient vendor license application for Fork and Delicious from the agenda.
I'll second.
All right, motion been made by Mr. Ren, seconded by Mrs. Ruffley, by a roll call vote. Vice Chair Ren.
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter.
Yes. Oh, sorry.
I'm going to abstain.
Mrs. Ruffley. Sorry, I didn't catch that if you said it. I don't know if my speaker cut out. Is anyone else able to hear? Is it on my end?
I think Sarah, you're muted.
I think Sarah might be muted.
Oh, I think it might be my internet. Can you guys hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay.
So what was that vote?
Yes.
Yes, okay. The chair votes yes. Three to one. With one extension, or three with one extension. We also have item 4B, an application for a one-day beer and wine license for the Auburn Packagog Golf Course. And so with that, I'll hand things over to, oh, where'd she go? Ah, you moved on the screen, to Kristin Pappas.
Hello. We're applying for 31-day licenses. We'll start July 2nd through the end of September on Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays, and we'll serve beer and wine in the clubhouse. We do not have an extension and premise permit, so it'll be strictly enforced that they'll have their beverages on the premise of the deck, and we look forward to serving them. All our staff will be tip certified. The date of that class is June 28th and pending the senior center for a location.
Do board members have any questions or comments?
Yes, Mr. Chair, just as a matter of full disclosure, I'm a member at Packagog with an annual membership. I have no financial gain from this vote, so I'm not going to be abstaining. I will take pardon.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the application for a one-day beer and wine license, provided that all applications, oh, sorry, all applicable requirements of the state and town and any of its departments, boards, and commissions have been fulfilled. Said licenses are subject to all conditions stated upon them. Failure to comply with any of the conditions shall invalidate the license and render it null and void with the conditions of the DCG to be placed on the licenses.
Motion been made. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion been made by Mr. Ren, seconded by Mrs. Ruffley, by a roll call vote. Vice Chair Ren.
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter.
Yes.
And Mrs. Ruffley.
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. It is unanimous. All right. Thank you, Kristin.
Thank you very much, all of you.
All right. Item 4C, Board and Committee Reappointments. So for the Board of Registars, we have Deborah Nurse. Would like to be reappointed to a term expiring June 30th of 2024. So is there a motion?
That we reappoint Deborah Nurse to a term that expires June 30th of 2024.
I'll second.
All right, motion been made by Mr. Carpenter, seconded by Mr. Ren, by a roll call vote. Vice Chair Ren.
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter.
Yes.
And Mrs. Ruffley.
Yes.
All right, it is unanimous. Moving on to gift acceptances. We have $50 to the library. Hold on. From, oh, God. Carl and Pam. Massafoit? Anyone else have a better idea of how to name us? Miss Card?
You pronounced it correctly, Tristan. This is Jean Collins, Director of the Library. You pronounced it correctly. Massa, thank you. They're Auburn residents.
All right, great. Thank you for that. I'm going to butcher a lot of names up here. Right, so $50 to the library from them. Entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion to accept with gratitude.
Second.
Motion been made by Mr. Carpenter, Mr. Ren, seconded by Mr. Carpenter, by a roll call vote. Vice Chair Ren.
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter.
Yes.
And Mrs. Ruffley.
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. It is unanimous. Now, on my agenda, I don't have it listed, but I'll ask the town manager, are we able to accept the donations brought made to the Fire Department and Police Department at this meeting?
Yes, you'll be able to because you have a standing item on there for gift acceptances. And I know we didn't have that information at the time the agenda was posted that we were getting these donations, but because the agenda is posted for gift acceptances, you can do that. I believe Sharon sent it out to the board members early today.
Yes, okay, I'm pulling up that email now.
Okay.
Right, okay, so gift acceptances. $5,000 to the Police Department from Solar Wolf Energy and $5,000 to the Fire Department from Solar Wolf Energy.
I'll make a motion that we accept with gratitude and that a letter be prepared for the chair's signature to send to Solar Wolf Energy.
Is there a second?
Sorry, I'll second.
All right, motion been made by Mr. Carpenter, seconded by Mrs. Ruffley, by a roll call vote. Vice Chair Ren.
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter.
Yes.
And Mrs. Ruffley.
Yes.
All right. Before we go on, I just want to thank Mr. Carpenter for attending that event, the ribbon cutting where the checks were presented to the Fire Department and Police Department. Item Proclaimations and Recognizations. So we have a request for the Board to vote and send a letter of congratulations to Patrick Mazda on their new facility.
Through the chair, if I may, the reason I had asked the Board to put this on is that there will be a, I believe Patrick Mazda is having a ribbon cutting on June 24th. It's from 6:30 to 8:30 PM. I don't know if it's actually a ribbon cutting, but they're having an event. So I was going to go by at 6:30 and I thought it would be nice. I don't know if they invited members of the Board. I'm assuming the members are invited and included. And if Tristan, as the chair, you were going to swing by, I thought it would be nice if you could bring a a letter of congratulations to them. If not, if the Board votes it, I'm happy to bring it with me when I go at 6:30. They're opening their new facility. I believe it's 189 Washington Street.
What was that date, Julie?
I believe it's June 24th, Mr. Ren.
That'll be Thursday.
June 24th at 6:30.
I would think I'd be able to, but I was almost cutting it close tonight, so.
And if you weren't in the, so Vice Chair, that's fine. I just wanted to make the offer that if no one could make it, I'm more than happy to bring it if the Board wants to do a letter. I thought it would just be a nice thing.
Yeah, I'd be, Tristan, I'll certainly go as well, or if you aren't able to go. I was actually lucky enough to be, I was still on the planning board and was able to help this or see this project through and vote on it. So it looks great from the outside and I'd definitely like to see it closer, so.
Great.
Great.
Okay. With that, I'll entertain a motion unless any other board members have any questions or comments. Seeing none.
I'll make a motion to that the Board send a letter of congratulations to Patrick Mazda on their new facility.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion been made by Mr. Ren, seconded by Mr. Carpenter, by a roll call vote. Mr. Ren.
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter.
Yes.
And Mrs. Ruffley.
Yes.
The chair votes yes. It's unanimous. The Board also has a request for Board votes to send a letter of recognition to the citizen who saved a life at Dr. Arthur and Dr. Martha Pappas Recreational Complex. With that, I want to turn things over to the town manager to explain a little bit.
Thank you very much, and I'm actually going to, in a minute, turn it over to Deputy Fire Chief Glenn Johnson. But we, we thought it might be a nice idea for the Board to send a letter of recognition, and I'll let Glenn explain what happened and what these citizens did. But it is my understanding they don't want anything public, which is why their names are not on here. They didn't want public recognition. They just did what they did because it was the right, they felt it was the right thing to do. So anyway, I just thought if we're able to get their names and they're willing to give us their names, we could send a letter from the Board. So with that, I'm just going to turn it to Deputy Chief Johnson.
Sure, on the morning of May 9th, around 10:30 AM, a gentleman that was playing soccer, approximately 48 years of age, collapsed on the field. Some bystanders took over. They started CPR. They yelled to the ref to go get a DFib, which I'd like to thank the committee that I was a part of, as well as many other people, that we were able to get DFibs throughout the community on all the community fields. And this is a prime example of why it's so important to have them there. The ref was able to get the DFib, brought it back, and then some off-duty nurses and different medical professionals, there was an off-duty paramedic from another community there that assisted, and they were successful in shocking him, bringing him back to life. That happened a couple times. Our ambulance arrived. And then a few more times in the back of the ambulance, he coded on us, and then we were able to bring him back as well. Ended up going to the hospital, made a full recovery due to their efforts, no deficits. The gentleman is doing well. He does not want to be recognized. We did offer to do a news story on it because I'd like to tie it into how important it is to have these DFibs in the community, but he does not want to be recognized. The bystanders that assisted, they're not looking for any recognition at all. They were just happy to do their part and assist this gentleman. At some point, they are going to do a reunion with this gentleman. He wants to talk to them in person and thank very much for the second chance that they gave him in life. So that's really the story on that. I think all around, it was a great success, a great story to show how important it is to have these DFibs and people trained in CPR within the community. You're muted.
Tristan, you're muted.
Thanks. It's great to hear that they were used to save someone. I'm really glad that we have them there. If the person wants to remain anonymous, then I don't know if we can really continue with this motion unless we hand it off to be presented to them anonymously, so.
I could get you the list of names of the bystanders that assisted. They, I'm sure they would be happy to get that, but they're not looking for any public recognition in the media.
Okay, well, I'll leave it up to the Board. I don't know if the Board has any comments as to what their preferences. I would certainly support sending it over to anyone that is comfortable sharing their name. I'll leave it up to the Board for comment.
That's a great story. If they want, if they want to remain anonymous, I think that's their prerogative. I mean, they're heroes, really, so yeah, I'd support sending them a letter. And if Mr. Johnson can get us their names and we could do it privately and quietly, then I'd certainly support that.
All right. So I guess to the town manager, do we need to take a vote on this if we don't have the names? Can we leave this, should we leave it to another agenda or? Vote on the contingent.
Yeah, through the chair, I think you can vote to send the letter. If Deputy Chief Johnson can get us the names, we can send the letter. I think they just didn't want a public recognition at this meeting. But I think a letter coming from the Board would probably be a very nice gesture from the Board. That way, while it is public information, it's not that you're putting their names out there publicly.
All right. That then I'd entertain a motion.
So moved.
Uh, Mr. Carpenter make the motion? I didn't hear anything.
I'll make a motion to send a letter of recognition to the citizens who saved the life at the Dr. Arthur and Dr. Martha Pappas Recreation Complex.
Motion been made. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion been made by Mr. Ren, seconded by Mrs. Ruffley, by a roll call vote. Mr. Ren.
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter. Mr. Carpenter. Maybe lost it. Mr. Carpenter. It's not showing he's muted either. I'll message him now. Am I treating that as an absence?
Did I get disconnected? All of a sudden I hear nothing, so all of a sudden I'm like, what? What's going on? Provided we can get the names, I don't have an issue. But I do feel a little awkward in that the the folks who don't want public recognition and we're kind of, in a roundabout way, giving them public recognition. So not that it doesn't merit it, but you know, if people ask you not to, you know, make a big deal, I guess we should honor that. But if the Board, I'll go along with the Board. Provided we get the names, the office gets the names.
All right, my feeling is that with them being, them giving their names to Glenn, they'd be accepting that rather than us kind of putting them in the public eye. So I think they'd still have the opportunity to decline even the recognition from us by just not, by asking that their names not be given out. The motion had been made by Mr. Ren. We were doing a roll call vote when you cut out. And so I just called on you, Mr. Carpenter.
I'll go along with it.
Okay, Mrs. Ruffley.
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. It's unanimous. Thankfully, this is our last meeting on Zoom, so this is the last time that that will happen. Anyway, we hope. Moving on to item F, we have a drain layers license for Gold Star Builders of Worcester, Mass. Their application is enclosed in your packets.
Mr. Chairman, I had a question about this. I believe our policy requires three letters of recommendation, and I see one, and it's from 2017, which makes me a little uncomfortable. And everything else is just licenses, some of which are, by the looks of them, expired, so. I don't know that it meets our policy per se.
I kind of agree. To the town, ooh, is there a representative at this meeting?
Through the chair, I don't believe we have a representative because it wasn't required to have it. I want to ask Sharon if she happens to have what the language is on the Board's policy in front of you, Sharon. I'm not sure if you do.
No, I know I do not, but drain layers are not required to attend Board meetings because they're vetted by the Board of Sewer Commissioners, which the letter is attached recommending the Board issue the license. I don't know if they mean the other licenses from other towns to be a recommendation.
Mr. Chairman, if I could add to this, if possible. This was presented to the Board of Sewer Commissioners. And I believe the motion was made at that meeting for them, if they provided additional information in the way of other licenses or recommendations, that they would support their license. So if you need additional information, we could certainly bring it back to the Board if that was your desire.
Mr. Carpenter, do you have any more questions or concerns to go further with this application?
I would say we have to follow our policy. I mean, we can't willy-nilly have one person do it and then somebody else not do it. I mean, some of these, you know, licenses are several years out of date. So to me, I'm certainly not comfortable. And like I said, we have a policy in place. The policy should be followed because if we make an exception for this group, we're going to be asked to make exceptions in other instances. And if people are comfortable with it, then I mean, certainly they can do as they have a vote. I won't be voting to support it.
Other members?
I'd ask if, I mean, can we send this back to get more versus just denying it? I, seeing that the Sewer Division approved that, I mean, I'm very much inclined to approve it, but Dan brings up some very good points here. And it's a precedent that I agree with Dan that I don't think we'd really want to set. I mean, it's just a few, you know, a few more recommendations that they'd have to get. It doesn't seem like a tall, a big ask here. To Mr. Coyle, would this delay any kind of projects or anything they have going on, or is, would this be a reasonable request?
I think it's reasonable. We can bring it back. Juliana will bring it back to the Board of Sewer Commissioners at the next meeting and see what additional information that they can provide to us.
All right. Other members have any comments or questions? Seeing none, I would tend to agree. I think holding it off until our next meeting and when we have more information might be better than just denying it tonight. But either way, I don't know if approving it tonight going against our policy would be the right decision. So with that, leave it up to board members to make a motion.
Chairman, I'll make a motion that we hold this to the next meeting and request the Sewer Department to follow up with the applicant to provide the documentation required by the policy.
Okay, motion been made by Mr. Carpenter, seconded by Mr. Ren, by a roll call vote. Mr. Ren.
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter.
Yes.
Mr. Bertheum.
I can't hear you.
Yeah. Glad it wasn't just me. No. There might be something wrong with the speaker on the computer.
Through the chair, I did talk with Mr. Bertheum earlier, and he was having computer issues, so I don't know if he's, he still is, but he may still be experiencing some computer problems.
I spoke to him when I said it with the last time. Lionel, do you want us to hold off until you can call in?
It looks like it might have frozen. I think my recommendation would be.
Uh, it looks like it might have frozen. I, I think my recommendation would be in case he doesn't, if he's not able to get back in, maybe move on and he could jump in on the next vote perhaps?
Yeah.
Yes, he's saying yes, so he can hear us.
Alright, um, so no vote from Mr. Berthe. Uh, Mrs. Ruffly?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, it's unanimous. From present members. Alright, we have another drain layers license from Vegas Builders of Berlin, or Berlin, Mass. Uh, you also have the application in your packets as well. Do members have any comments or questions? I hear the turning of pages, not just mine, so I'll give everyone a minute.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the license, provided that all applicable requirements of state and town and any of its departments, boards and commissions have been fulfilled. Said license subject to all the conditions stated upon it. Failed to comply with any and all the conditions shall invalidate the license and render it null and void.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion been made by Mr. Carpenter, seconded by Mr. Ren, by a roll call vote. Mr. Ren?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mrs. Ruffly?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, it's unanimous. And the final drain layers license, um, and this was to a company that's been licensed within the past five years. Uh, Gustafson Plumbers, Inc. of Worcester. You also have that application in your packets as well.
Mr. Chairman, through you, just a question if Mr. Coyle's still on the line. I, I don't see a letter from uh, the sewer department in support of this. Is he aware of? Is he aware of that? Any action they may have taken?
Sure, I think, um, I believe Joanna may have the information on this one. Joanna, do you have the, the letter from the sewer division?
Um, I believe that because they were previously licensed within the last five years, um, their policy is to approve that, um, just as a, a, a matter of procedural.
Mr. Carpenter, do you have anything else?
Nope, thank you.
Other members? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the license, provided that all applicable requirements of the state and town and any of its departments, board and commission have been fulfilled. Said license subject to all conditions stated upon it. Failed to comply with any and all of the conditions shall invalidate the license and render it null and void.
Second.
Motion been made by Mr. Carpenter, seconded by Mr. Ren, by a roll call vote. Mr. Ren?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mrs. Ruffly?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, it's unanimous. Alright. Auburn Housing Authority vacancy update. With that, I'll turn things over to the town manager.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, thank you to the members. Um, the, the Board of Selectmen is aware of the new law related to the vacancy on local housing authorities. And in this case, the Auburn Housing Authority. And that, that vacancy has to follow the new law. It's been determined uh, by the state as well as by our own town council, that that will become the town-appointed board seat, which means the housing authority has to follow a process to notify all of their residents of the vacancy and seek, uh, solicit applications from residents to see if any of them would like to serve as the Board of Selectmen's appointed, uh, seat. At, at this point, the, we did receive one application from a tenant, uh, but it is my understanding through the town clerk's office that the housing authority did not notify all of its tenants. They only notified tenants that were in the state units. There were two units. There are the state units and there were the federal units. They already on the board have a tenant from the federal units. So the housing authority believed that they only needed to notify the state tenants. The law actually says you have to notify all tenants. My understanding is that, uh, the Department of Housing and Community Development was going to be reaching out to the Auburn Housing Authority to discuss this matter with them. Until such time that we hear, hear back from DHCD, uh, we do not know if the process was followed properly or not. It may have been, but it may not have been. So if the process wasn't followed properly, my, my, uh, assumption is that they're going to have to re-notify the tenants and include all of the tenants this time. And at that point, uh, there has to be a letter that's sent to them that gives them thirty days to submit their names. So once we are assured that that process has been followed, then we can bring to you any of the names that are submitted from the tenants. So I, I don't have any of those yet because we are waiting to hear back from the state, but I want to keep the board informed about this.
Thank you.
Do board members have any questions or comments at this time? Alright, seeing none, then we'll wait on you for, uh, another update, I guess, at our next meeting. Thank you for that. Uh, moving on to Gen item J, we have the annual vote to reform, reaffirm the Board of Selectmen's Code of Conduct for our policy, and that's included in our packets as well. Do board members have any questions or comments on that? Seeing, I'll just say that in the past, I've voted against this policy, uh, because I had some concerns about how we may, as board members, individual board members might be able to, uh, communicate with residents and, uh, or serve constituents. I haven't noticed any problems over the last few years that this policy has been in place. Um, I don't think anything has really impeded me from helping the residents that have come to me. Um, or from discussing what's going on in town with residents. So, um, since those concerns really haven't been proven valid, in my opinion, to myself, um, I'm going to support this. Uh, with that, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve, lost my place, uh, to reaffirm the Board of Selectmen's Code of Conduct.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion been made by Mr. Ren, seconded by Mrs. Ruffly, by a roll call vote. Mr. Ren?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
No.
Mrs. Ruffly?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Alright, discussion on revisiting the plastic bag reduction policy, uh, implementation post-COVID. So I was not on the board, uh, when we, when COVID hit and this bylaw was suspended, but it was a big part of, uh, the work that I did when I was on previously. So I wanted to, uh, bring this up to the board and, and see where we could go to actually implement it again. So with that, I'd like to turn things over to the town manager or maybe to, uh, Darlene Coyle to see, uh, where we are in terms of, uh, getting the bylaw, um, back in effect.
Through the chair, I'm going to turn it to, uh, Darlene Coyle, who is also our Public Health Director.
Hi, good evening all. Um, so, um, thank you for, um, uh, first of all, thank you to the board for, um, having, um, uh, having the grace to allow us to, um, put this on pause, uh, while we were going through COVID. Um, so the, um, the plastic bag, uh, reduction, uh, bylaw was passed in 2019. It really started several years before that and, um, um, Tristan had, uh, a lot of information that he brought to the table and helped, um, work through, um, work through the ideas and how this would, um, work, um, in Auburn. We appreciate all his help putting this together. It has been, um, a long process. Um, I think it was probably back in 2017 when we started the discussions. So it, it, um, has, uh, gained, um, the momentum. Through 2019, um, it was on a referendum, um, a non-binding referendum, and it was, uh, supported, um, wholeheartedly, um, over sixty percent. Um, from the residents, um, it passed in 2019. And then shortly after that, um, uh, we had, uh, COVID happen. Um, at the state level, uh, because there were so many unknowns, um, the state had recommended, um, a pause on reusing, um, bags, um, and reusable bags. Um, it did last, uh, for a period, uh, when the COVID cases were high. Um, however, uh, that, there, there are not any, um, uh, any holds on that, um, at this time. Uh, I want to also just, um, bring to your attention also, um, the state itself was looking at a, um, a state law on this. And I think that there have been several, um, several revisions that have been made to it. And, um, I believe at this point, they have a redraft, uh, that they have proposed that has a lot of changes, um, that was originally what was, um, proposed, uh, for plastic bag, um, reduction that would be statewide. Um, we're not really sure, um, if that is going to move forward because of the, um, the several revisions to it. Uh, but what I would, uh, I just wanted to bring to your attention, um, we would like to, um, have, uh, some time to put together a plan that we can present to the board at possibly their next meeting, um, to identify the highlights for, um, our process moving forward. So this is going to affect our, uh, our businesses in town. Um, and we want to make sure that now that, um, we are, um, the, the focus so long was on COVID, and now that things have improved in that front, um, that we can reintroduce and move forward on, um, the process for implementing the, uh, the ban. So the, the bylaw definitely was approved, um, at town meeting. Um, we have that, we can move forward, but I think it is, um, uh, fair to say that we wouldn't want to, um, you know, send out a letter to all of our, uh, businesses and enact this in thirty days. I, 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 I don't think that's, um, that's necessarily fair, um, based on what, um, what the, the businesses have been through in the past, uh, year plus. Um, but I think it, if the, um, if the board is open to it, um, giving you a process and a proposed, uh, timeline for implementation, um, if that is, uh, if you're amenable to that.
Board members have any questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman, I agree that we should, uh, take this slow. We don't know what, um, the situation is with individual businesses, what the volume they've had. You know, they may be sitting on quite a few of these plastic bags. And it wouldn't be right to add this to them trying to reopen and, and get back to probably the starting point. You know, they've been having a very difficult time. So I would support giving the Director of the Board of Health and her staff time, uh, not to rush it at all. You know, even if it was August, I think we just need to give people a chance to get back to normal and see what the legislature is going to do with a bunch of bills that they've got proposed. I think there's still some considerable uncertainty in the commercial sphere, and I wouldn't want to add any extra to that.
Members? Seeing on, I would just say that my only concern with, uh, with it would be the same, that some businesses may have now stockpiled plastic bags that they either wouldn't be able to get rid of if we did it right away, or, um, would end up getting fined. Uh, I don't think going all the way out to August for us to take action, um, necessarily makes sense, but, uh, at least coming up with a plan for our next meeting as to getting the information out there and letting businesses know that this will be re-implemented at a certain time and, and giving them a timeline, uh, would, would be benefits of them and to us. Um, I also don't think we can rely on the state because they've also been juggling this around for years before we even started considering it. So, um, I, I don't, I don't think that their motion, theirs is going to pass, but it, it might this time around. Um, many more towns have, have now, um, pushed similar measures through, so it's, it's much more popular now. So, uh, the state might surprise me.
Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm not suggesting that we wait to see if the state is going to vote for their own plastic bag ban. I, I'm simply saying that there is a lot of bills related to commercial activities. In addition, the Board of Health is busy juggling many different balls trying to assist the commercial community to get back to wherever they're going to get back to. So I just wouldn't want to put time pressure when tomorrow we're lifting the, you know, state of emergency and we don't know what the legislature is going to do with certain that are going to affect businesses, which is going to directly impact the Department of Health. They're going to need to respond to all these things, and I wouldn't want them to be delayed in, in helping the immediate emergency for something that is not currently causing any issue in the community at this time. That, that's my other point.
Through the chair, just a thought, um, would it be proper for Ms. Coyle to maybe send a letter to the Chamber of Commerce just signifying our intent to, uh, to move this, this, uh, forward again in the future?
If, if I may?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Um, so that is, um, uh, thank you, Mr. Ren. That is one of the pieces of this. Um, so what I'd like to do is just give you, um, uh, a proposed timeline of the steps that we're going to take. Um, we intend to, um, see if we can, um, attend a Chamber of Commerce meeting, um, to kind of talk about what the, the highlights of the, uh, plastic bag ban, um, and, um, how, how other, um, how other towns have implemented this and, um, be able to answer questions. Because I think part of, part of the, the ban is people being able to, you know, their, their concern is money. Um, you know, Mr. Carpenter, Mr. Little Liberty mentioned, they are going to have stock of product that they're not going to want to, um, you know, lose money on. Um, obviously, they, you know, the businesses do, are aware that, um, there is ban in place, but because of COVID, um, obviously, everybody's schedule of what has been normal in the past year, nothing's normal. Um, so being able to have kind of a reasonable, um, timeline to move forward, be able to educate the business community, be able to, um, notify all of the businesses, not just the ones we permit, but all of the businesses in town that may use, um, you know, the, um, uh, the single-use, uh, carryout bags, and then going through and being able to answer questions, being able to, um, give education and some resources of how they can handle it, um, moving forward, you know, um, what kind of bags that they can buy that are going to be in compliant. So is many things part of it. Um, we have a, um, Economic Development Coordinator that attends, um, the chamber meetings regularly. We have a Business Roundtable that we intend to speak with. So there are, you know, many steps to it. Each one of those pieces takes some time to do, but, um, I've already had, uh, a meeting with my staff to time, to talk about it, um, how we move forward. At the next meeting, I can present to you, uh, a proposed plan and, um, some proposed dates for implementation, and then the board can decide, um, what they feel comfortable with, um, as far as when, you know, we actually, um, start doing, um, the implementation of it. So I think there's a whole educational piece that, um, we can undertake, and that, that part is, um, is, is getting the word out there, being able to answer questions and making people understand like what this is about. Um, so I, I think that's a, a great suggestion. I, um, it is something that we, we intend to do.
Excellent, thank you. Excellent, thank you.
Other, excuse me, other questions or comments? Just want to add, uh, I, I do think that since we've, you, you've gone through the process before that um, a lot of the educational component might already be taken care of. Um, so I, I don't know how in-depth the uh, um, you'll really have to go. So hopefully that'll cut down on the timeline. Uh, like I said, I, I'd be concerned about the stock that they have left over more so than getting the word out because it was, it was almost implemented when um, when the bylaw was suspended. Um, that said, I don't think we have to take a motion or make a motion or take a vote on this tonight. Uh, it sounds like the board is pretty much in agreement that that's the route that we're going to take. Um, so unless uh, members have any other objection to that, I think that would be uh, where we leave this for this meeting and then pick it up again at our next one, hopefully. That's right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Coyle, and thank you for all of your help on this.
Thank you.
All right, uh, moving on, we have a discussion and potential vote on our summer meeting schedule. So. My usually schedules, what is it? Um, meeting in July and August. Uh, Town Manager and Mr. Carpenter can correct me if I'm wrong on that. Uh, I also just got a message from Mr. Berthium that he thinks he's on the call now. So actually, before we go on, um, if you want to unmute yourself or try to talk now, Mr. Berthium, so you can participate.
Can you hear me now?
Yep. You're on now. Great. Um, so with that, what are our usual? We usually do one in July, one in August, am I right with that?
That's correct, that has been the past practice. Uh, with the understanding that if there's a need for the board to meet in between that, we're happy to pull a meeting together. I believe in the past, Mr. Chairman, the Chair has asked the members, um, you know, what, what weeks may work for them. If you start with the two that are regularly scheduled uh, and, in each month, and see which one the board may choose, or sometimes the board may want to choose another one. But right now, if no change is made, it would be July twelfth, July twenty-sixth, August ninth, and August twenty-third, with the thirtieth of August being the optional fifth, uh, only if it was needed. So you may want to check with the members and see which of the two July meetings you're going to have a, a quorum, a majority for, as well as the August meetings. Um, I would make one suggestion on the August meeting. I, I'll just double-check, um, we, if the board is going to be taking a vote to send the Public Safety Facility uh, to the voters, I believe we need to have that vote by the sixteenth or so. So I think my, my recommendation would be uh, that possibly you would take that vote in July, at the end of July, or the first meeting in August. So I think my recommendation would be, if you're choosing one in August, maybe we choose the ninth, and then not have another meeting unless something comes up that you need.
Uh, also, by then we, we won't be doing uh, virtual meetings, we'll actually be in person. So this will be more important than it is uh, right now, or has been last year. Uh, I have no preference, um, because my summer is looking really boring. So uh, I don't know if any other board members have preferred dates, but I'm certainly open to anything.
And as Chairman, in the past, we tried to go into the middle of the month each month so that we're not too far apart from our normal meeting schedule. If we keep it to, if we do it too early, then if something comes in, if we do it in the middle of the month, that seemed to have worked. We haven't typically had to have an extra meeting doing it that way. But I don't know what people's uh, vacation schedules are, so that may not work. We have a whole new board, almost.
Yeah, I would lean towards.
I am actually, uh, sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
I'm on vacation the week of the twenty-sixth, but I am open for any of the other weeks.
How many people buy and sell houses in the summer? I'll be here.
All right, uh, Mr. Berthium, any preference? Did we lose you again?
I'm sorry, I, I finally got it. I, uh, no preferences for me.
All right, so that uh, looks like we're looking at July twelfth and um, I don't know where the board is going to fall on, on the Public Safety Complex, um, but I wouldn't want to close any doors, so I, I would um, suggest the board go with July twelfth and August ninth uh, as our, our meeting dates. Um, if we wanted to move more towards the middle, we could do the calendar. July nineteenth, but um, I would, I would assume stick with the second Tuesdays, um, or second Mondays, excuse me. So with that, I'll, I'll leave it up to the board to make a motion.
Sorry, Mr. Chair, I didn't make it, I didn't catch those, the second date for all of the date in August.
Uh, August ninth.
And July twelfth, you said?
And July twelfth.
I'll make a motion that we hold our summer meeting schedule as follows, having a meeting on July twelfth and August ninth.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion made by Mr. Ren, seconded by Mrs. Ruthley, by a roll call vote, Mr. Ren?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Berthium?
Yes.
And Mrs. Ruthley?
Yes.
All right, the Chair votes yes, it is unanimous. All right, moving on to the big agenda item of the night, request for the Board of Selectmen confirmation of the appointment of Joanna Paquin as DPW Director effective June nineteenth, twenty-twenty-one. And with that, I want to turn things over to the Town Manager.
Uh, thank you very much. Uh, before we get to that, I just want to give some background, especially for the public, uh, on what's led me to seek the board's confirmation of Joanna Paquin as DPW Director this evening. It is really with mixed emotions that I announce to the public that Bill Coyle, our DPW Director and Town Engineer, will be resigning his position here to take a new position with the City of Worcester as Deputy Commissioner of DPW in Worcester. Uh, Bill's last day here will be June eighteenth. While this is a tremendous opportunity for Bill, it's a huge loss for the Town of Auburn. Bill's been our DPW Director, Auburn's first, since the DPW was created in May of two thousand eleven. Bill's also been our Town Engineer since two thousand eight. Under Bill's leadership, the town has implemented a multi-year, multimillion-dollar roadway improvement program. It's assumed the operations, management, and maintenance of the Packer Talk Golf Course. It's embarked on a aggressive stormwater program, created and implemented the fleet maintenance and facility management units, managed numerous roadway projects and contracts. And through all of this, Bill has been extremely diligent, dedicated, and committed department head, always seeking perfection, always seeking the best results for the Town of Auburn. In short, Bill's been a tremendous asset to the town and an exceptional department head and member of our leadership team. I cannot thank Bill enough for the work he's done here in Auburn, and it's really been a pleasure to work with such a consummate professional. So I want to express my gratitude for Bill and all he's done for Auburn and for Town Administration. He's been with the town for thirteen years, and I can truly say that every day with him, it has been a pleasure to work with him. And Bill, I wish you much success in your new position in the city of Worcester. Uh, so before we move on, Mr. Chairman, I, I recognize and I see that a couple of people, I would like to say a couple of words about Mr. Coyle before I go to the next portion, which is also exciting because he's a great person that we're going to be talking about in a minute. So I, I think Ed Kuzinovich wanted to say something, and I think a couple of people called into the call.
Yes, I've gotten a message uh, from a friend of the board saying I better not forget them, um, when they want to say a few words. So I will go on to Mr. Kuzinovich first.
Uh, thank you, Julie, and thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight on this agenda item. I like to publicly, um, I like to take this public opportunity to uh, bid William Coyle farewell. It's been an honor and a privilege to have worked with you, Bill, over the past thirteen years, not only in a professional manner, uh, and capacity, but we became good friends along that thirteen-year route. Um, Bill's work ethic, I can tell you, and attention to detail is like, is like no other person I worked with. And his departure is going to be felt by all those who have constant daily interaction with him. I know Bill will thrive and flourish wherever he may go, and would like to take this opportunity to wish you well, Bill. A sincere, a sincere thanks for all that you have done for the Town of Auburn in the community since your appointment as DPW Director. Best wishes and good luck, Bill, thank you.
Uh, before we go on to the public, uh, uh, I'll run through um, board members uh, if they want to make any comments.
Uh, yes, I had emailed Bill the second uh, Ms. Jacobson had sent out the news. Uh, and, and Bill, I said it before, but you're going to be missed. You, you were, you were great for this town, and it's so well-deserved. I know Worcester is going to really benefit from your, from your efforts. Um, don't forget us, I know you'll still be local, um, and really best of luck, I'm really happy for you.
Thank, thank you.
Other members?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Carpenter.
Well, it's, it's very interesting, I was very surprised to see that Bill wanted to go to the big city, but I'm very happy for him, I know he'll do a phenomenal job for the citizens of the city as he has for the citizens of Auburn. And though we'll miss him, we, we know that thankfully he's, he has worked as a mentor and, and built a bench in the DPW that will stand the citizens in, in good stead. And I'm sure many of them, I, I see them on the screen here, will help the, the new DPW Commissioner get acclimated and, and succeed as she moves forward.
Thank you. Uh, other members have any comments? Seeing none, uh, I just want to say that when I, oh, look at you, Kristen. Uh, when I first saw the email, I was visiting a friend uh, and stopped what I was doing, talking mid-sentence, and said I got an email from the Town Manager and then started to read it. And apparently they could tell by the expression on my face that something terrible had happened to the town, um, and they asked me if Auburn had caught on fire. Uh, I really couldn't believe uh, that we were losing uh, Bill Coyle. I mean, he's, he's been, been the DPW Department um, for as long as I've uh, been involved in, in the town, and it really does feel like we're, we're losing a piece of Auburn. So uh, Bill, congratulations, um, and thank you for the service that you, you provided to the town. Uh, it's been, it's been great.
Thank you.
With that, I will hand things over to our former Chair, Dorian Goodrich.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the opportunity. You know, it was less than one month of my last meeting when I heard the news that um, Bill was leaving. My immediate thought was, what a wonderful professional opportunity for Bill, and so well-deserved. And I was thrilled for him. And that immediately, that immediately followed by the thought of what a huge loss for the Town of Auburn. As Julie just said, Bill was our first DPW Director. It was a huge time of change, people were, people were hesitant and wondered what was going to happen, and Bill stepped into that role perfectly. Well, you know, he heard from Selectmen back then, the streets, the streets, the streets. And as Julie pointed out, you know, Bill has a comprehensive roadway program for many years that I'm confident that Joanna will step right into and continue that. Um, when I went to the Town Manager with a constituent issue, and I, I uh, I addressed it with Julie, Bill would immediately be in contact with me and let me know that, he reached out to the resident, he stopped by the house, he made a personal phone call, he made a site visit, he didn't pass these things on, it was him doing it personally. And um, on a personal note, many times, you know, while he was waiting for his workaholic wife Darlene, I would have great conversations with Bill outside of Town Hall when I would show up. And, and Bill and I could talk shop for hours and hours. He just, he lived and breathed the DPW. I remember attending the um, Leadership Academy for the town, and the week it was um, the DPW. Bill showed us out Highway Barn, the equipment there, the equipment up at the golf course, like he was showing. He was a proud papa, showed off his children. His dedication to that department is just absolutely incredible. Um, the City of Worcester is lucky to have him, I'm lucky to have my um, relationship that I do with him. I wish him the best of luck because of my professional position. I'll probably be in touch with him in the City of Worcester. And um, just to wrap things up, you know, I'm, I know that you guys haven't taken the vote, vote yet, but I wish Joanna the best, and um, she had a great um, a great mentor and who will continue to be there, and Auburn is in good hands. And again, Mr. Chairman, I thank you for the opportunity to um, wish Bill all the best.
Thank you, Dorian.
I'll turn things over to Kristen Papas, who I know had her hand raised and has been waiting patiently for, for her chance.
Thank you. Bill, I just want to say it was an honor and a pleasure to work for you, and we will never forget the difference you made in our town. And I'm, I'm, I feel that the city is very, very lucky to have you, but you will definitely be missed. So thank you for all your work.
Thank you, Kristen, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if it's okay, um, if there was, if, if, after you find out if anyone else wanted to speak, I think it would be nice uh, to have Bill say a few words, and I think Bill also wants to say a few words about Joanna. So maybe that would be a good way to do this.
I was just going to turn things over to, to Bill, but uh, as you point out, there might be other people on the line too. Um, so uh, uh, if there are any other uh, people who would, would like to say anything uh, at this time. All right, seeing none, Bill?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I thank you all, um, uh, for your kind words, just bear with me. It, it, excuse me, it's been an honor to work for the Town of Auburn for the past thirteen years, and I didn't want to get emotional. But I, I'll just say, I want to thank you all. Um, and to begin with, thanking Julie and Ed, they have been extremely wonderful to work with. The Board of Selectmen, this board, Pass Boards, I can tell you, has always given the support to the DPW to allow us to do our jobs. Um, you know, this town is a great town to work for, and you know, um, Julie and Ed can tell you that this was a decision that was not easy for me, um, but it's something that I did not want to regret in the future. So, thank you all, uh, I was honored to, to be the first DPW Director, and I just, I want to thank the residents of the Town of Auburn. But with that, I want to move forward and express my support for Joanna Paquin. I think Jo, Joanna is going to do a tremendous job um, for this town. Joanna had worked alongside of me for ten years, she is extremely professional. Um, she will take over as DPW Director without skipping a beat. I can only hope that she is able to get an Assistant DPW Director that is as great as she has been for me. Uh, so with that, thank you all. I thought this would be easier at Zoom, but I guess not.
Thank you, Bill. Uh, Mr. Chair, if I can then go on to the uh, next part of this, and then after I talk a little bit about Joanna, I, I also know that Ed uh, wants to echo some of my words. So again, I want to thank Bill, and as you can tell, this is, it's been difficult on all of us, uh, we love Bill. Bill does a phenomenal job and we are going to stay in touch with him. He's been kind enough to offer his assistants anytime if any, any of us need it after he leaves. And I would say that the city manager in Worcester offered the same thing. So I, I, I agree that this could be a very seamless transition. So in accordance with the town charter, tonight, I'm seeking the Board of Selectmen's vote to confirm the appointment of Joanna Paquin to the position of DPW Director. To be effective, uh, Bill's last day is June eighteenth, so technically June nineteenth. In your packets, I've included a copy of Joanna's resume, so you can see how qualified she is. Joanna has been the Assistant DPW Director, as Bill just said, since January of twenty twenty. And she's worked for the town as our civil engineer in DPW under Bill's direction for the past ten years. Joanna is extremely well qualified for this position and she's been involved in all aspects of the operations of the DPW. Her role as Assistant DPW Director in her past ten years of experience as civil engineer make her very well qualified. And while it's a loss for the town to have Bill moved to another community, our succession planning efforts have really paid off as Joanna Paquin is prepared to assume the role, the role of Director with the confirmation of the board this evening. Joanna has a Master of Science degree in civil engineering, a Bachelor of Science degree in civil engineering, so both a Masters and a Bachelor's, both from the University of Massachusetts in Amherst. Her certifications include State of Massachusetts Registered Professional Engineer, State of Massachusetts Licensed Soil Evaluator, Certified Professional in Erosion and Sediment Control, and an MMA Suffolk University Certificate in Local Government Leadership and Management that she just got. Uh, prior to coming to the town of Auburn in twenty ten, Joanna was a civil engineer with Graves Engineering. Joanna has been involved in all aspects of the operations for the past ten years, including the twenty-year roadway improvement program, construction of the Pappas Recreation Complex, stormwater management program, municipal golf course, snow and ice operations, uh, all of our equipment, our software systems, the vehicles for salt and sand. Joanna knows all of that. Uh, obviously she's very well acquainted with the sewer division as the current sewer superintendent. She's also fully engaged in the fleet maintenance, the facility management, the cemetery division, recreation, culture, and engineering. Joanna also knows all of Auburn's roads, our stormwater system, our contractors, our ongoing, uh, projects, our GPW employees, our systems, our processes, and DPW's budget. Additionally, she knows our boards and commissions and works very well with them. In addition, uh, I just mentioned this Suffolk Certificate that she received. That was a very competitive program that Joanna got into. It's a statewide program. Uh, only about, uh, maybe fifteen people are selected in the state each year to participate. And Joanna was a very successful graduate of that. It included, was really intensive program, included five graduate level courses taught by Suffolk University faculty. So I can tell you that several communities are having trouble seeking qualified candidates for their DPW Director positions. We are so fortunate that we have a candidate right here in Auburn who works for Auburn, who meets and exceeds all of the qualifications and requirements that other communities are seeking. Joanna has more experience than most DPW Directors in the region already, with sixteen years as a civil engineer and ten of which in Auburn. The town has invested in Joanna over the past ten years to ensure that she has the skills, experience, and knowledge required to successfully become DPW Director upon Bill's, uh, re- we thought retirement, but upon Bill's, Bill's, uh, leaving. So, uh, in addition to having the experience and the knowledge, as well as the education, she can successfully fulfill this position. She's well poised to do so when Bill leaves with, with the board's vote. So I do respectfully request the board's vote tonight to confirm Joanna Paquin's appointment as DPW, uh, Director. And Mr. Chairman, with your approval, I'd like to ask Ed Kozinovich, uh, to say a few words as well.
I'll turn things over to Ed.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I've also had the pleasure of working with Joanna, uh, Paquin, um, regarding daily operations and on a myriad of other project initiatives since she was hired in the fall of two thousand and ten. Uh, she currently holds a Master's Degree in Engineering with the, the distinct designation as a PE Professional Engineer. Joanna has ten plus years of municipal engineering, stormwater, wastewater, and administrative experience. She is a constant professional who I wholeheartedly agree, uh, with the recommendation being made by our town manager to the board tonight to appoint Joanna Paquin as William Coyle's successor as the Town of Auburn DPW Director. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, with that, uh, I'd want to turn things over to, um, Joanna Paquin. To the board, I'm sorry, excuse me, go ahead.
Through the chair, I'm sorry. I, I, I think maybe Joanna was going to wait until after the vote.
The vote.
If that's okay. It might make her a lot more comfortable.
First off, do board members have any questions or comments for Joanna? All right, seeing none. Uh, I have a comment and that's just, uh, I didn't know before reading your resume that, uh, you went to UMass Amherst. It's a great place to go for a bachelor's and master's degree. Anyway, uh, with that, I'll, I'll entertain a motion from the board.
Mr. Chairman, uh, it's my pleasure to make a motion that we confirm the appointment of Joanna Paquin as the DPW Director as of June nineteenth, twenty twenty-one.
And I will wholeheartedly second.
Motion being made by Mr. Carpenter, seconded by Mr. Ren by roll call vote. Uh, Mr. Ren?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Berthin?
Yes.
And Mrs. Ruffley?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Congratulations. It's unanimous. Now I'll turn things over to.
Thank you. Uh, first of all, thank you to the board for, um, your vote of confidence in me, um, as well as Julie's appointment. Um, in addition to all of your kind words, Julie, Ed, Bill, um, Bill has done an amazing job as town engineer. He'll be missed. Um, and he's done a tremendous job as Auburn's first DPW Director. And I will continue, I will do my best to continue on that work. I'm, I'm thrilled to be taking on this position. Thank you.
Thank you. As you can see, there's been a lot of tears. Thank you, Bill. But you know, I just have to say, it speaks volumes for Bill's character. And I would tell you, it speaks volumes for Joanna's character. Uh, and the fact that Bill, being the first director and leaving, uh, in, in recommending his, uh, assistant i- is wonderful. So I, I want to thank him. And I really want to thank this board for voting to appoint Joanna. Uh, this is a critical position in our community. It is a, a very, uh, lot of responsibility in this department head. So we are grateful to the Board of Selectmen for your leadership, for your support. Can't thank you enough.
All right. Thank you, everyone. And congratulations again to Joanna Paquin. And of course, goodbye, Bill. That's congratulations and wish you the best.
I appreciate it.
With that, I'll turn things over again to the town manager for the summer concert schedule.
Thank you. And, uh, also, if there's one other item in there, if you don't mind, there's the COVID reopening plan, which
Oh, yeah.
actually includes the summer concert schedule. Um, so we, uh, so basically on the COVID reopening plan, I know most people know this, but the governor did announce that as of, uh, May twenty-nine, all of the restrictions were lifted. And as of tomorrow, effective tomorrow, the state of emergency will be lifted. So uh, likewise, I will be lifting the local state of emergency that was declared at the beginning of this. I will be, uh, lifting that in Auburn as well tomorrow. So there'll be no more state of emergency. Uh, we opened Town Hall a couple of weeks ago. Again, we have been open since last July by appointment only. The kiosk was an incredible saver for us. Uh, people enjoyed doing business at the kiosk. I think they hate to see it end. I would tell you, we left it open for an extra two to three weeks after we reopened with no restrictions in Town Hall. Just to give people that opportunity to get used to, maybe get their last times at the kiosk. But we can no longer fund uh, staffing of the kiosk because as of tomorrow, the state of emergency is lifted. So therefore we don't want to use the CARES funds for anything that may be a questionable expense. So I really wanted to take a moment, number one, to thank Cheryl Westerman, uh, for staffing the kiosk for us. She did a great job. You know, Cheryl, she's personable, she's friendly. Uh, and she has indicated that she's always willing to come back, uh, if needed with a phone call. So I want to thank her. Today's her last day as a town employee. Uh, she's been with us a long time. Unfortunately, we, we did have to eliminate her position uh, over a year ago at the Senior Center because the Senior Center was closed. Uh, so, uh, we wish Cheryl well and I'm assuming she'll be going on to retirement. And, uh, I just want to thank her. So Town Hall was open. The library, I see, uh, Jean Collins is on, the library also reopened when Town Hall did. Their hours were, uh, are Monday through Friday, nine to six. They're going to be picking up an additional, uh, evening on Thursday nights. And they're also in July going to be opening, uh, at least to see how it goes on Saturdays, every other Saturday. Uh, we are finding that there's not a lot of demand on the weekends, so she's going to be watching those numbers carefully. And if, if there's demand and we need to uh, extend the hours, we can talk about that. I just want to remind everyone that in addition to the position at the Senior Center that we laid off, we also had to lay off two employees at the library. So we are short-staffed at the library. Uh, we also have a couple of vacancies at the library. So, uh, in addition to losing a couple of positions there, we're just trying to get back up to speed. Also happy to say that today, uh, is the opening day for the Senior Center. And we look forward to welcoming our seniors back. The building looks fantastic. DPW, uh, painted it, did some new built-ins. It, the Senior Center just looks great. So we can't wait for our seniors to see it. We're going to continue to have some programming outside under the tent that you see there. We were able to purchase that tent through COVID. Uh, seniors enjoy being outside. It's a healthy way. We still want to encourage people in all of our buildings. If you have not been vaccinated, we're not requiring it because we're not going to ask you, but we highly recommend that you wear a mask if you haven't been vaccinated and that you still maintain your distance from other people, just for your own safety, as well as the safety of our employees. Uh, so with that, uh, the next two items, Mr. Chair, if I can just talk about them at the same time. Uh, so the summer concert schedule, we did find out very last minute. Obviously, we thought we were going to be reopening August one and then, uh, within a couple of weeks, we found out that that reopening was May twenty-ninth. So, uh, I have to thank, uh, Ken Fairbanks from DPW, Kristen Pappas from DPW, Bill Coyle, and Joanna for, uh, working to get a great summer concert schedule. It's up on our website. You can see that our first concert, uh, again, we're going to be starting on Thursday evenings. Uh, so our first concert is going to be July eighth. We're, we're very excited that we have been able to, uh, work with Music Worcester this year. And they're going to be providing, uh, actually sponsoring two concerts for us. So we'll be paying Music Worcester, but they're bringing in, um, a, a, a great, a couple of great shows. Uh, the Brubeck Brothers are going to be opening up our concert series and they play all over the country. They're phenomenal. Uh, so I think, you know, we expect a lot of people for that. Um, and then we have a tremendous concert series, Mr. Chairman, for the rest of the summer on Thursday evenings. Almost all of our concerts, if it does rain on Thursdays, get moved to the following Tuesday. I am not sure about the Brubeck, uh, Brothers yet. We're still working on that rain date. Uh, as well as a couple of others, we're working on a rain date. But we're happy to say that, you know, we, we have a, a nice series kicking off again. And the farmer's market, Kristen's on the line here. I want to thank Kristen for all the work she does and Eileen, uh, works, Eileen Alexander works with her as well to get the farmer's market underway. Nice job, Kristen. We've got, again, we have a flyer out on our farmer's market. That would be starting, Kristen, is that starting June twenty-fourth?
That's correct. Yep. Movie night next, this Friday, movie night.
Thank you. Movie night this Friday. Great thing at Pappas Recreation. Farmer's Market going to be on Thursday evenings, uh, from four to seven. The concerts start at six, so we intentionally merge them together on the same evening because we hope that people coming to the farmer's market go to the concerts and vice versa. It's great for the vendors and it's great for the people coming to the farmer's market to have these wonderful concert series. So we encourage people to come out. Again, if you're not, uh, you know, it's outdoor. This is safe. This is, this should be a good series. Just if you're not vaccinated, please continue to take precautions. We don't want to see a, a, a rise in our numbers again here. But looking forward to starting up our programs again. And we thank the board for all your support. It's, it's tough to pull these programs together quickly. And as we all know, we've had to pivot dance and, and shake through the last, uh, fifteen months. And we, we were able to do it again for the concert series. And we're working on getting our fall, fall programs up and running as well. So thank you for the time.
Uh, thank you, Julie. Uh, moving on to tabled items. We have a request for an update on Camp Gleeson by Mr. Carpenter. Uh, I'll say that I've also gotten questions from residents on, on this. So, um, this is definitely relevant. Uh, with that, I'll, I'll turn things over to him to, to speak a little bit about it, uh, and then to town administration.
Thank you.
I, I think I said it all in my email, so I, I don't think I can elaborate on it. I, I just got a couple of questions and I thought if, if a few people are wondering, then I'm sure many more are. So it would give the manager an opportunity to, I thought I'd, uh, give the manager an opportunity to update and put something out there if, if she likes, or that's, that's.
Thanks, Mr. Carpenter. A great opportunity to do that and great opportunity while Bill, uh, is still on the call this evening. Uh, he's prepared to give you all an update. So I'm going to turn it over to Bill.
Thank you, Julie, uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. So the Gleeson building, um, we began work last fall. Uh, with, with COVID, it, it limited us in terms of how much we could get done during the summer, spring and summer months. Um, but we did hit the ground running in the fall. We, uh, had to clean out all the material that was stored inside, which took several weeks. There was quite a bit of material there. Um, and then began gutting out the interior of the structure. In addition, a, a, a retaining wall, I'm sorry, a carrying wall had to be constructed on the back of the building before we could demolish the back portion of the structure. That was removed in the fall. We then began excavating for the new foundation in that area in the fall as well. Un- unfortunately, um, the cold weather came pretty quickly last winter, so we were unable to pour the new foundation. Um, so we had it prepared and focused our attention on, uh, removing some of the trees in the area and continuing with the work inside of the building. Uh, in the spring, when the weather allowed, we were able to pour the new footing and then the new foundation. And just recently, we poured the new concrete, uh, floor. A lot of that, as people drive by, isn't really that noticeable, but it's something that took a lot of time in coordinating with different contractors, different contractor for the foundation versus the concrete floor. In addition to that, also worked with, um, ServPro, um, coordinating the black mold, uh, removal, which occurred in the basement. And also, uh, we, we still are working on asbestos remediation, which is also in the basement. So we need to finalize that work with the black mold and the asbestos. Um, so a lot of time-consuming items that you don't see a lot of progress, but that do take a lot of time to complete. Uh, we are anticipating that in the next few weeks, in, in July, we will be framing up the back part of the structure. Uh, we believe the entire outside of the building will be completely renovated, rather, um, by wintertime. And we will focus all the remaining work inside during the winter months. So again, it'll be, you'll, you'll, you'll see a lot of work on that's more noticeable. I know you can drive by Route twenty and, and see the, the building and it looks like there hasn't been much done, but there, there has been. It's just something that you can't visually see. Uh, most people can't, um, see it driving by. So, uh, and again, you'll see, I think in July, you're going to see a lot going on with the, the framing and uh, work on the outside of the, the building. But I'll be happy to answer any, any questions that you may have.
Do board members have any questions or comments? Seeing none. Thank you, Bill.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, just one last comment. Uh, I, I didn't mention, I, we anticipate all the work to be completed by next spring. But I also wanted to thank all the DPW workers. Um, without them, over the past ten years, I could not have done my job. I have a great team here and I, I think that, um, I'd be remiss not to thank them for all their hard work. I have a tremendous team and appreciate all the dedication that they have provided to the town. So I just want to make sure I thank them as well. Thank you.
Um, moving on to other, uh, member items. So we've started talking about this for a while now. Um, our discussion on, on changing the name from Selectmen to Select Board. With that, we had asked the, uh, town managers to maybe get a little bit more information about what the process might be. So I will, uh, turn things over to, to her to see what we might be, uh, sort of looking at with that.
Uh, through the chair, there is a, my understanding is that there is a legislative process. And, uh, your, the former Chair, Dorian. And the former Chair, Dorian Goodrich, has offered her assistance to help walk us through what that process would be if the board is interested in doing this. As her role, working for the state senator and working for the state and the legislature, there is a process that has to be followed. So if this board chooses to move forward on it with your permission, Mr. Chair, I would reach out to Mrs. Goodrich and see if she can walk us through everything that we need to do.
Do you need an official vote for us to move forward with that or general consensus from the board?
I think just a general consensus. I think at some point, you will need to take a vote to move forward. So maybe my recommendation would be this. If the board is interested in moving forward to changing the name, you might want to take a vote this evening to pursue the change of the name from the Board of Selectmen to the Select Board. That may be enough to get, to be able to provide to the Senator's Office.
Well, I'll leave it up to board members as to whether or not they feel comfortable taking a vote tonight. I certainly do. But again, if board members have questions, comments, concerns regarding this.
Mr. Chairman, just as inside, the Town of Clinton just went through this. So that might also be a source of information for members wanting to learn more about it as well. I'm certainly comfortable voting for it. And it's great to see Mrs. Goodrich's willingness to continue to serve the town in her new capacity. And that's great.
Do other members have a preference?
Full support. It's my preference.
Yeah, we've talked about it before and it seemed pretty, pretty much like everyone was on the same page. So I mean, I'll entertain a motion if anyone wants to make it.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we take the necessary steps, including filing legislation or asking that legislation be filed on behalf of the town to officially change the name to Select Board.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
A motion has been made by Mr. Carpenter, seconded by Mrs. Ruffley, by a roll call vote. Mr. Ren?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Berthin?
He fell off the call a minute ago.
I did see him leave, but I thought that he still has his phone up. Mrs. Ruffley?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. It's unanimous of the four present Selectmen.
Thank you. I will pursue the options. I'll be talking to Town Council and reach out to the Senator's Office and likely the State Representative's Office as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And I have the meeting minutes from April 26, 2021. Do any members have any commissions or objections? Seeing none except in this red. And I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion being made by Mr. Carpenter, seconded by Mr. Ren by a roll call vote. Mr. Ren?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Don't think Lionel's backing. Mrs. Ruffley?
Hello, Ms. Madison.
This is Madison. Hi, Madison.
Come back anytime.
I'm loving voting so she can say hi.
She's been trying to do this for an hour now. I figured it's toward the end. I can pick her up for a second. She's beautiful, Julie. Thank you.
We'll go now spend time with. And the chair votes yes, so we are adjourned.
Thanks. Have a nice evening. Bye-bye. Bye. Bye. Good night, Madison. Bye, Julie.